Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
I am Esther Olson Murphy. I am the chair. To my far right, we have alternate Laura Montagno. Next to her is Laura Davies. My far left is Mark Lemus, Kevin Baum, and Bob Pryor. Before we get started, I'd like to announce that the application of J.K.'s Haley Associates, ZBACase 25-3 for 97 enforcement, has been withdrawn from tonight's meeting at their request. So our first chair is the application of Peter and Tricia Robitaille for a variance of Article 4, Section 4.3, Schedule II Density and Dimension Regulation Residential for proposed construction of a 28-by-40-foot detached garage with less than required minimum side yard setbacks. The subject property is located at 46 Oakland's Road in the RU Rural Zoning District. Tax map parcel number 11-10, ZBACase 25-1. I'm assuming this is you at the table?
This is us.
Feel free to present.
Thank you very much, and good evening. My name is Chris Hawkins. I'm from DTC Lawyers, right down the road, and Mr. Robitaille is with me this evening. I'm not going to read the application materials to you, and we rely primarily on the written materials. I just want to highlight a few items under each of the variance criteria. So the first is whether the variance would be contrary to the public interest. Legally, that's considered together with the spirit of the ordinance factor. And the primary purpose of setbacks is to avoid overcrowding of lots. And what the board considers primarily is whether the proposed variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood or otherwise threaten public health, safety, or welfare. We don't see any instance where the construction of a detached garage was threatening public health, safety, or welfare, so we're going to focus on the essential character of the neighborhood. Hopefully, we've demonstrated through our materials that there are other lots, other properties in the area which have detached garages that are kind of front of the house closer to the road in the properties than the residential portion of the property. And the proposed garage would be architecturally consistent with the house, and obviously in the Robitaille's best interest to make a structure that is attractive. And therefore, we do not see, given the nature of the way other properties in the area are set up with garages to detach and attach, that there'll be any alteration to the essential character of the neighborhood. And on that basis, we suggest that the first two criteria are satisfied. The next criteria is whether substantial justice is done. That's largely a factor of weighing the gain that would be achieved by the denial of variance versus the potential harm or difficulty imposed upon the Robitailles if it's denied. This particular location is significant to the Robitailles because it is the most sort of convenient and accessible, or would require the least site work. Potential alternative locations in the property would most likely require significant tree cutting and significantly more site work. That's more likely, in our view, to have a detrimental effect on the property and the neighborhood as a whole than having the garage in the proposed location within the setback. Given the nature of the properties in the area, we're primarily talking about larger lots. Many of them are heavily wooded, but to the north and northwest of the Robitaille's property is kind of clear pasture land. The proposed location would avoid any potential impingement on that very attractive view over the pasture land. Another significant thing is when you look at the maps, the immediate abutter, that property is essentially a narrow strip of land. It's not buildable under any circumstances, we believe. That makes it so there's no risk of future overcrowding because we don't anticipate there's ever going to be any construction on that narrow strip of land to the immediate south, which is the abutting property. We also suggest that there's no diminution in value of the surrounding properties. This is a detached garage. It's going to be used primarily for storage purposes. There's not going to be initial traffic, noise, disruption. And I think you see in the file that there's a letter from the abutter to the south of the Robitaille property that he completely supports the application. And he states his belief that he does not think that there's going to be any impact on the surrounding properties at all. Finally, the last factor, whether it's an unnecessary hardship, the special condition of the property, this is a long, narrow lot. It is heavily wooded to the west and slightly to the northwest of the Robitaille property. It's a little bit cockeyed sort of to the road. It's heavily wooded back there. There's some wet areas back there, and we're trying to avoid having any impact on those areas, if possible, to preserve those existing conditions. The next factor is whether there's a fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and the particular application of it in this instance. The purpose is to prevent overcrowding. I think you can see from the photographs and the maps that there's no danger of overcrowding. And the condition that we're proposing is, as I said and as reflected in photographs of properties, primarily to the south, within a quarter or a half mile of the Robitaille property. There are other properties in the area where there's a garage or other structures that's kind of closer to the road, both detached, excuse me, detached structures as well. So we think it's consistent with the neighborhood, and there's no danger of overcrowding, so we believe that portion of the unnecessary hardship test is satisfied. And finally, the proposed use is simply reasonable. As stated, there are many other properties in the area with detached garages and structures, and we think a detached garage is a reasonable accessory use in the RU zone. And I'm going to let it rest there unless the board has questions. If I can't answer them, I'll ask Mr. Robitaille to answer them.
Questions from the board?
I do. Yeah, go ahead. Could you talk a little bit about these abutting properties, the pictures that you sent? Are any of these properties showing garages or dwellings that are not within the 30-foot setback?
I can't tell whether the properties that are abutting are within setbacks, not abutting, if there are other properties in the area where the detached garages are within the setback or not. There are many properties reflected in the photographs where the detached garages are very, very close to the road, which in my opinion presents a more kind of an overcrowded, so to speak, appearance than the Robitaille proposal would be. It wouldn't be remotely similar to that.
Okay. And you're not aware whether they received variances for those or whether they were now non-conforming because the zoning laws have changed since those properties were there?
I do not know. I do not know with your grandfather whether variances were required for those other constructions.
Okay. And then I have one other question. You have one map here that just shows like one line of a wetland setback, but your application references in a number of places of having potentially impinging wet areas, wet nature. So is there any availability of a more detailed soil map that shows soils' elevations?
There's no map that we have that shows topography. The lot is essentially flat.
Okay.
It's essentially level. And there's, to my best understanding, and Mr. Robitaille will correct me if I'm wrong, the wet areas are kind of towards the back and the wooded area.
Yep.
So nothing that shows where your poorly drained soils are located on your parcel?
Yep. So we had a preliminary wetland sort of study done, trying not to like over-invest in a whole survey because it's like five acres total. So we just sort of looked at that front area and just through conversations with the gentleman that was like the environmental engineer, he sort of just pointed to like a lot of that whole backwooded area as being wet. And I know just from being out there and stuff, I mean, it's literally, it's wet back there. So we didn't have intent in disturbing it, so we never had that like lonely survey like that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Laura.
Are you sure?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So by my calculation, the 24-by-40 dimensions that were...
28-by-40, I believe.
Okay. I'm assuming I did it correctly. Comes out to an 1,120-square foot footprint for this building, and 40 feet is much longer than your typical garage. Could you comment on the intent for the entire space? And it also appears to be somewhere between a story and a half and a story and three-quarters. So there's second-floor space. So what's the intention for all of this area?
Yep. So the intent is just storage for stuff. I have snowmobiles and ATVs and tractors, like this kind of stuff, that sort of crowds up our normal garage and kids' bikes and all of that kind of stuff. So the intent for the downstairs portion of it is just storage of vehicles or recreational stuff. And then the upstairs is just cold storage for Christmas decorations and all the stuff that's sort of...
So all unfinished area?
Upstairs unfinished area, and then just to drywall, I think, would be what I'm picturing for the garage area.
So there won't be, there'll be electricity and heat?
I honestly haven't gotten that far, to be honest with you. I would think that I would want electricity there for lighting and stuff.
Sure. That makes sense.
Yeah.
But what about water service and septic service?
No water service, no septic.
So the concern I have is that this is a big building. It's in the setback. It's very close to the property line, and that, you know, in subsequent years, someone could come back and talk about converting it to living space or office space or some other use. And so it doesn't appear to be your typical garage. And do you already have a two-car attached garage?
We have a three-car attached.
Three-car attached garage, okay. So, which is fine. I mean, that's great, but it just seems like it might be potential for additional uses in the future, and that's why I'm asking these questions.
I understand.
So how would you feel about maybe a condition that it not turn into finished space in the future?
I think...
Unless further relief were sought.
Well, the immediate intention is to use it for storage. What the future may or may not hold, I mean, Mr. Robitaille recognizes that if he ever wanted to change the use of it, as you suggest, that would be a whole separate process and he'd have to come back for that. I think his preference would be to not have his hands tied right at this moment, but he does recognize that if he ever made that decision, that would be a whole separate process he'd have to come back for.
Often, people ask for forgiveness after they've made certain changes, and we are much more inclined to be understanding in those circumstances. So I can see this potentially coming, and I'm just trying to understand the intent. If the intent is truly just for storage, then, you know, maybe that would be something that should be included in the application or the conditions.
All we're requesting is that there not be a hard and fast condition put on it like that. Mr. Robitaille recognizes that if in the future he ever wanted to change the use of it, that would be a whole separate process that may or may not get granted at that time. But the law's been evolving very rapidly in this area, and none of us knows what the future may hold. So we'd just like to keep that option open if in the future the Robitailles decide that something they would like to pursue.
I have a couple of questions. One is about the approximate edge of wetland shown on your plan. Looks like that was determined by GOV Environmental. I don't know whether that's what you were speaking to earlier, and was that an actual wetland delineation or just an initial sort of rough determination by GOV?
GOV came out to, like I said, I think it was formal, not all the way formal, I guess. You know, he came out and walked the property. He flagged it and then gave back this overlay to me. And at that point is when I started, the intent there was basically to identify where there was wetland and then understand if it would even be possible to have a structure in this reduced setback. You know what I mean? So I was trying to...
Yeah, I understood. I'm not, you know, critiquing whether you got the wetland delineation. It's expensive.
Yeah.
I just want to understand what information we're working with, because part of the argument is that this is, your neighbor's southerly lot is basically unbuildable, and so the impact of the setback, from the setback relief is less impactful because of that. But, you know, so I'm just trying to get a sense of what we really know about that lot and how, you know, precise the wetlands information is. I'd also ask if you can give a little bit more information about the site conditions in that area, just to be totally candid with you. I'm struggling a little bit with the amount of land you have on this lot and space available to meet the setbacks. And it looks like the pictures, like there is sufficient area without just pushing towards the existing driveway. So I'm just looking for a better understanding of what those site conditions are and how those create special conditions and create a hardship on the property.
Yeah, I think the other potential locations, to put it, would be less advantageous for the reasons I mentioned, that it's more likely to impinge upon wet areas of the property that have been identified by GOV to some extent, and would require more extensive kind of work. We believe it would be frankly less attractive and more likely to have an impingement certainly of the very favorable view out towards the pasture land to the west and northwest of the Robitaille property. And the property is quite long and narrow in addition to all that relative to the other properties in the area. And we think these conditions is what creates kind of unique circumstances and leads to the hardship.
I guess, you know, it's hard because it isn't a scaled plan and just looking at the aerial, but, I mean, there does seem to be space between the existing driveway and the proposed area of the garage that would be in front of a large tree and wouldn't impinge on the view.
Maybe I'm looking at...
I'm looking, yeah, what I'm looking at is on that.
Thank you.
If you shifted, yeah, if you shifted the proposed garage directly north towards the driveway, and I'm also looking at this aerial photo and just trying to get a sense of, it appears, and again, not enough to fully understand the site conditions, which is why I'm asking the question, but it does appear like there is space in that area without potentially having to cut any trees or impact view shed. It's up to them where the...
I know.
But even...
Do you need to see what we're talking about? No, we have it here. Thank you. We just wanted to make sure we were on the same plane you're looking at.
So one thing would be that this isn't like, that's not perfectly to scale where that's shown. If that, I think this is showing more space than there truly is for, between the corner of the building and the driveway, the corner of the proposed location and the driveway. And basically, if you're to move the structure, I'll call it like planned west or, you know, left along the property line, it gets closer to that wetland that they laid out, and then you wouldn't be able to have the required 50-foot buffer.
Wetland buffer.
Right. Yeah, I was thinking actually, I was asking about moving it north, closer to your existing driveway.
Like right to the driveway?
Right to the driveway, which would be less impervious surface, which would potentially get you out of the setback and wouldn't have any more, and would get you farther from the well.
I think what Mr. Robitaille is saying is that there is no way to move it north and get it out of the setback because there's not as much space. The plan that you're referencing is not to scale, so there's not as much space between the proposed location and the garage, or the garage and the existing driveway as there appears to be from that. Maybe the overhead view kind of gives you a better feel for it in the photographs.
Yeah.
There's not as much space that's actually there. There's not enough space to move it out of the setback completely.
Yeah, if you were at the property line, where the structure is shown on the sketch that you were pointing to, if you were at the property line there and walked straight towards the driveway, you wouldn't be able to have really any size structure there without, and you wouldn't be able to get the full setback. So that scale is just off, I think, where it shows the driveway.
I mean, I guess I, you know, that's... I mean, I guess I, you know, that's, I struggle with that somewhat because, you know, you're, you're asking for dimensional relief, pretty precise dimensional relief. So we really need to understand what we're dealing with and what the impacts are, how close we are, what the, you know, what the, you know, layout, what the impact of having the building in. And so it is difficult to work without a scaled, and I will say there is a lot of space. I am sensitive to the fact that there are wetlands on that other lot, so the impact to the abutting lot owner, you know, the typical setback concerns, privacy, et cetera, are maybe less, less of an issue, but, you know, it's, you are asking for relief from the zoning ordinance and there does seem to be an awful lot of space on this lot to put a very reasonably sized garage.
So if I can respectfully refer you to this photograph in your package. It's the last photograph in the package.
Okay. Thank you.
And the top of it says, "Subject property showing proposed garage location." I think that'll give you a better sense of the scale. If you look, basically you can see that lone tree.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a small kind of yellowish sign in front of it. That's, that's the proposed location.
A corner, the center, and it is a large structure.
So the, so the southern part of the garage would obviously be within five feet of the fence, the fence being the property line.
Correct. Yeah, the fence represents the property line. So the structure would start the five feet from the property line and extend towards the driveway and at the 28 feet.
Is the intention to have this facing the street?
Correct.
This, okay.
Yeah.
So I think the photograph reflects that there's not really that much room between the driveway. There's not much room to move the garage north, the proposed garage north of its proposed location.
To the contrary, Mr. Hawkins, I would argue that the photograph actually shows that it's going to be extremely crowded between the property line and the, and the building that's going to be there, which is, as we know, a very large structure. And that moving it essentially opposite the garage entrance to the existing three-car garage, you have a large pad shown on your, both the aerial photograph and on the plan. Moving it that far away, which granted is toward, is further back on the property, but it is not going to impinge on the views of the pasture as you had made the case for earlier, and it is going to move it away from the property line and perhaps fully away from the third required setback without relief. It's extremely difficult to make a case for a hardship when you have this much property.
Well, the evidence that we've submitted is that the, the area sort of back behind, behind the garage, behind the existing garage is far more likely to impinge on wet areas of the property.
You mentioned GOV Environmental had done some wetlands mapping. Is that included? I didn't, I'm not clear that I.
It's on, it's a sketch on this chart.
That? Oh, okay.
That's the extent of it. It was.
Okay. I didn't think that was what he meant.
Yeah.
I guess I have reservations too, knowing that the variance goes with the land. So in 20 years, if somebody else buys this land, now they have the right to build five feet from the property line. Anywhere on this lot, correct?
No.
Well, no, we can, we can restrict it to this particular offer. I guess part of my concern is, you know, we, you know, there is very little, we don't have a full sense of, of what's on that neighboring lot, but it's already impinged. And so I don't know what could be built there. And so, you know, I understand the argument that there's wetlands here, so the likelihood of this structure being, you know, impinging on anyone's use of that, that southern lot is low. On the other hand, there's very limited space to build anything there, and they do have the right to build.
This lot actually goes, the neighboring lot is roughly U shape.
To the south?
Yes.
Yeah, like in case.
If you look at this chart.
In case is the next word.
And if you compare that chart to the photograph that was provided, the overhead photograph, you can see a house at bottom center. That's on a lot 11-9, which is technically not in a butter.
That's correct.
And there's that strip of land between 11-9 and the subject property, 11-10, that is, while that segment of the parcel is not buildable, the lot itself is buildable. 11-7-1 does have buildable property, modulo any, any, any wetlands that we may not know about. All right? But 11-7-1 is buildable, just that strip is not.
That's, that's correct. I didn't, I don't believe I said otherwise.
No. We're just, we're arguing amongst ourselves at this stage of the game.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't gone, we're still in.
No, and that's helpful.
We haven't moved to deliberations, but, but it is.
I guess I still am struggling without, with such limited wetlands information and just site information, I'm having a really hard time. And I just, I want to be clear with you guys so we're not, no surprises with the, with the hardship here.
Yeah.
Because there is, there is a lot of space on this lot, the five-acre lot. There appears to be space, you know, in line with the existing driveway and with the existing home without the need to violate the ordinance and, and request a variance. So, you know, I, I guess I'm, there may be conditions, site conditions that really require the proposed garage to be where it is, but I don't think we have enough information based on what's been provided.
So if I can take a moment?
Mm-hmm.
To chat with Mr. Robitaille?
That was a good observation. Why didn't you say the size of the building? And then I looked at the picture and like, this is about, this is about like five acres.
So taking on board all your comments, which we hear 100%, I'm wondering if the board will grant us permission to either table this or continue this, and then I'll ask Mr. Robitaille to go do some more wetlands mapping and try to delineate things more fully and give you more information if that's agreeable to the board.
I don't have an issue with that. I guess the question is how much time would you, would you need, but I wouldn't have any.
Does it make sense?
I would have to reach out to GOV and see, get on their schedule.
So is it, are you asking for like a continuance? Are you withdrawing the application so you can maybe make, you know? I guess I'm not entirely clear what you're asking for.
Well, I'm just asking for guidance from the board at this point. What I hear you saying is that more information would be helpful.
Yes.
A continuance, a continuance would be the same application at a later date. If you're considering changing the application, then I would suggest withdrawing this application, which we can do without prejudice, and that you could bring another application perhaps with a different location or with more information forward later. It is your decision, however.
And that gives you more flexibility as well in terms of the timing. And I, and I imagine that that's going to be largely driven by GOV Environmental and their, you know, their backlog.
Understood. So with that in mind, we're just going to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Okay.
We'll go get some more information and we'll bring it back before the board.
Do you require a motion?
Probably. For the best to have a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we allow for the, for case number 25-1 to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Withdrawn without prejudice.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any mortal worlds of that. Arnold Schwarzenegger will be back.
So before we open our next case, there's a couple of things, I think we may have some recusals.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recuse myself from this application.
Eleven.
No surprise.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to recuse myself from this application.
Free to go.
Thank you.
And then I would like to, the board is going to go into a non-public session for a couple of minutes before we get started.
Well, I wonder, before we go in, we address, we do have less than.
Oh, yes.
We have less than a five-member board.
Yes.
So.
You can go into non-public section, but I'm going to request a continuance. Under the statute, I need three affirmative votes.
Yes.
Right? And I'm entitled to, or the group is entitled to a continuance until there's a full board of five members. So.
That is fine. And we've, that is, we've always offered that to applicants if they want to.
Yeah, it's in, it's in your, your rule as well.
Yeah. You know, as you know, just to mention, we should have another member that is not recused next month, hopefully, but it's a, you know, we're, we're tough on numbers given the recusals. So just so you're aware of that.
We'll have to figure it out, but at least right now I'm not in a position to, to have an answer.
Sure. Understood.
But we would like a full board.
Okay. So we do have to vote.
I think, so you're, you're requesting to continue to.
I, I can look up the rule if you would like, but I think it's.
Under the rules of procedure.
See, under the rules of procedure, to continue until there's a five-member.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So.
Motion.
I mean, it's allowed under the rules.
Yeah.
I'll, I will move just to make it clear that we, we continue this application to the, what is it, the May?
You recall it the May meeting?
Well, I want to do it to a date certain, so.
Barb doesn't have a date off the top of her head?
To the.
Let's just be a sec.
Or Tuesday?
It's Tuesday. So the May 20th meeting.
I'll second that. That's what we're doing?
Third, third Tuesday. Right? That's the, Barb, that's correct, right? May 20th?
That's what I'm looking at.
That's from my calendar.
I'll double check him, so don't worry.
Yeah.
Come on now.
Chris is going to fight.
Yes, May 20th.
Okay.
Okay. So I move to continue to the May 20th meeting, the same place, same.
Same place, same time.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Will we stay meeting with, doing a non-public tonight or will that be done at the May 20th meeting?
It'll be at the May 20th meeting. That's it? We have minutes.
We have minutes to review.
I'm back.
End of the night.
I'm back.
Does the board want to talk to me anyway because I'm here? Do you want to, do you want to do your minutes and close the meeting and then we can talk?
Sure. Yeah.
Can we just minutes first?
Yes, that's what we're going to do the minutes.
So then you can go on.
Okay, we're still going, so it's, the meeting is still occurring. We have more things to go through, so.
The applications are done, but we still have to go through minutes. So if you don't mind, just clearing, quietly clearing the room, that would be great.
So it's me, Bob, Kevin, Laura, Mark.
Laura, I'm on tag now.
Where'd she go? Is that your purse or her purse?
It's my purse.
Okay, so she might have just bailed altogether.
Yeah, that's.
I didn't, I wasn't here, so I'm not going to vote on these minutes. Thank you, Sheila. Nice to see you.
We're still in session if you don't mind.
Um, did anybody find anything in the minutes?
I did not find anything.
My only question was on line 30. Video? I don't remember video.
Talk soon.
I mean, he might have said video, but.
One is the building hangs with, well, there was a PowerPoint. I think that's.
Is that what it is? A PowerPoint? Okay.
I think it was just a PowerPoint. I don't think.
Do we want to change it to PowerPoint or do we not? Because this was the one we.
I don't know what he said. I, I'm fine with leaving it as this because I suspect he said video.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't insane when.
No, you're not, because I remember it as, I remember him saying video, but I also remember seeing.
The PowerPoint on that screen behind us.
Yeah. It was an animation on the PowerPoint.
It was a visual presentation.
He didn't make the PowerPoint himself. He obviously calls the video.
I thought, I thought on the second one that they did like an animation of the, maybe not, but.
If he said video, video's what it is.
If he said video, and I trust Joanna more than any of us.
Yeah.
Based on her track record.
Nowhere in it say we watched a video, it just says they had a video, so.
He said it.
Yeah, he said it and they didn't show it.
Good.
Works for me.
Motion to approve the minutes of the March 18th, 2025 meeting as presented.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved.
Nicely done. Good speed.
Somebody can tell me something, I'll gamble.
Move to, move to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Well done.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.